Hmm. I'm live. Okay, well. Guess we're live. Okay. Going to the Upper Yoder Township Supervisors Meeting. Where the First Amendment is as cold as it is today. So. Ah, yeah. It's, uh, it's cold. So. I'm just gonna walk up this way. And, uh, thanks for joining me for another livestream. Hope you can hear me. Thumbs up to the one person. If you can hear me, hit the thumbs up or leave a comment or something, please. Okay. Thumbs up, you can hear me. Slippery. Slippery here on Harshburg Road. Hope I don't get hit. I'm gonna wipe this. Step over. Good. Smells like crack cocaine. Or at least what I assume crack cocaine burning smells like. Well. This sidewalk's not just. Oh, well. Fuck it. Crispy, crunchy. Cold as hell, my eyes are watering. It's cold. Not as cold as it was yesterday when I was downtown. Well, that was. That shit was something serious. Okay. So. Whoa. Treacherous and treacherous and arduous here. Okay. There I am in the frame. All right. I'm concentrating on not falling on my face. As, uh. Conditions are, uh, wintery, I guess. Here in. Here in. Here in Narnia. It's, uh, it's cold. Okay. Okay. Green light means green, green person means go. So I'm going. Oh. Boy, it's, uh, it's super cold. Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay. Apologize for all the okays and ahahs. I'm just cold. And running about five minutes later than I wanted to be. But I'm here. Yay. Okay. Everybody loves it when I'm here. Okay. Hello. I bet you were. Yeah, I'd imagine I am, uh. No, not yet, I didn't see him, I just, uh. Oh, good, good for you. Yeah, I just walked up, yeah. Yeah, I just snuck in. Came in through the back door. So, you know, of course, because, uh, it bees that way and I'm that guy. Something about using microphones, so I even brought a microphone. You know, so we'll put it up on the tripod here and we'll, uh, you know, do microphone stuff. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah. I, I, I never. Oh, I. Hey, I can't, I can't do the, uh. Thank you. Shit, I'm gonna turn that around. Close the public area. It said in the rights of request that I, that I find because of me. Yeah.
Hey, it is warm today. Forty-eight degrees, I'm balding.
I guess, uh. You gotta sign up first. Guess we can call them too for wish to speak. Interesting. There you are.
My soft eyes.
Yeah.
Yes.
This one first to me, we have a attorney up on the board today?
Yeah, I guess so.
Interesting. I just saw that, really.
At this time, all meeting orders, please stand still. With allegiance to the fact, United States of America, New York City, San Francisco, Colorado, and the middle one, committee does so. Approval of the agenda. Second, one move, second all in favor, aye. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, December twenty-fourth. All second, one move, and second all in favor. And also approval of the reorganization and regular meeting minutes of January second, twenty-two. All second, one move, and second all in favor, aye. Okay. Approval resolution number nine sixty-three.
I'll go ahead and read it again, the long, the long one. Upper Yoder Township, Cambria County, Pennsylvania. The resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Upper Yoder Township, Cambria County, Pennsylvania, to permit and regulate public comment at public meetings. Any member of the public who wishes to comment at meetings of the Board of Supervisors shall be afforded such rights or privileges consistent with the following regulations for the conduct, conduct of the meeting and maintenance of order. One, persons shall note their intent to speak on a sign-in sheet prior to the meeting commencement. Two, comments may be limited to residents and/or taxpayers of Upper Yoder Township, Cambria County, or the persons, entities who have dealings with Upper Yoder Township. Specifically, interested parties. A resident and/or taxpayer of the township or an interested party may request to be placed on the agenda for the public comment period of a regular meeting or special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Such requests must be made directly to the Board Secretary or a minimum of three business days prior to the day we meet. Persons may comment, shall, making comment, shall state his or her name and address and the specific subject of the comment. Five, comments shall be limited to agenda items or to matters that are or may be before the Board or are otherwise permitted by the Board of Supervisors. Comments, number six. Which may statements of personal attacks or statements that could be construed as libelous, slanderous, or that defame the character of any Upper Yoder Township elected or appointed official employee or any member of the public shall be avoided. Oral comments shall be limited to three minutes unless extended by the chairman to allow reasonable opportunity to comment. Persons shall abide by the directive of the chairman with respect to maintenance or order and conduct of the meeting. All comments should be made in a respectful manner without obscenity or threat of violence. All comments shall be directed to the presiding officer who may or may not refer to them to other supervisor for comments. The presiding officer may rule out of order scandalous and pertinent and redundant comments or comments that concernable for discernible purpose or effort or effect of which is to disrupt the proceedings of the meeting and which would otherwise violate eighteen PACS five-five-oh-five, five-five-oh-eight disorderly conduct. If the presiding officer determines that there is not enough time at the, at the meeting for the residents or taxpayers of the township or interested parties to comment, the supervisor may defer the comment period to the next regular meeting or to a special meeting occurring in advance of the next regular meeting. Except, as otherwise precluded by law, such deferral does not preclude the supervisors from officially deliberating or acting upon matters concerned official action, action, or deliberation which are or may be before the supervisors. All video recording equipment shall be stationed in the rear of the meeting room so as to not obstruct the view of any audience members. Supplementary lighting devices shall not be used in this in a manner that would obstruct the vision of the supervisors or staff. Audio and spinography, photographic recording devices shall be operated in the period public seating area and may not be placed in the supervisor's table without prior consent of the presiding officer in the meeting. Those using audio and/or video recording equipment must refrain from moving about the room with equipment during the period. Meeting. Any resolution inconsistent with the terms herein is hereby repealed. Adopted the eighteen July twenty-twenty-four Upper Yoder Township Board of Supervisors.
Okay, along those lines, under number twelve, all video recording equipment must be stationed at the rear of the meeting room. That's what it says.
This is audio recording, recording equipment, which is to be stationed here.
Is that a video?
This is audio recording, I don't answer questions. Member of the public. Please continue.
You don't answer questions.
I don't answer questions, please continue with your meeting.
Okay, anybody requesting beyond ten, Dave B. Hill, please for Meadow Drive.
Yes, sir. Yeah, Dave Hill, Meadow Drive. Thanks, everybody. My first question is, the meeting minutes for this township. Uh, August is the last time when they published what people spoke directly, was transcribed, and it was all published. There's some interesting meeting minutes last year, you know, about tree branches and the tree in division, all that stuff, but anyhow. I, I don't understand why it stopped in August. August is the last month. You know, that everybody that spoke prior to that got a cool accounting of what they said, it was all in there. Like, April twenty-three, there was five pages of speaking. And I, I, you know, if you could find out and let me know, I'm sure the house will let me know or something, thank you very much, but, you know, why aren't they doing it anymore? My other question is, last, last, uh, January two, there was a conversation about, we don't handle police complaints, Upper Yoder. Something was, it said that effect, I'm not sure. It wasn't a meeting where I felt like talking, I wanted to talk about, but police complaints aren't handled, nothing of it, I haven't heard from the cops, or is that how it? Was that the understanding that I got?
Um, was that Tom's father?
Something was mentioned about that. Okay.
I, I can't really answer that, Dave, I don't know.
No, no, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get the bottom, it's like, let me, let me tell you, my, my complaints haven't been addressed since September fifth, September seventh. I'm still waiting, I'm still, I know I got was, you know. I was interrupted last meeting by Bob Shahidi, starting with me about something. I don't have an attorney, I'm not represented, okay, there's no court case. But I wanted answers, that's not a reasonable explanation of why my complaints aren't addressed. I supplied a letter to you guys, to Bob Shahidi's office, and to John Blake, two letters. I think they need to be addressed. If you're not gonna address them then, tell me you're not gonna address them. Or if you wanna have a conference, we'll talk about that too. But what happened to me? My life, my wife's life is very important. Walking down Meadow every day, I expect to be treated like respect, like everybody else. Okay, it didn't happen. I first called, I assumed to be taken care of, nothing happened. Then I got an excuse, which is not long ago here, it's all spelled out. Second time, my wife's right there, she's the same old, there, of course, better. She was right there when I called, both calls. Nothing happens, so I write a letter, and I get a call from your chief, laughing at me for a little minutes. I'm not denigrating anybody, I'm telling you the truth. I don't do libel, I don't do slander. Those letters I wrote to Shahidi's office, there was nothing in there, it's not true. I'll stand on it, we'll go to court. But I'm not gonna accept what happened. I, I want an answer, I want a resolution. You can tell Bob, or you can call me, or whatever. But what happened today is not gonna be acceptable. Okay, there's enough stuff in there that clearly laws have been violated. What happened is wrong. And the rest of the stuff, I'll wait for you guys to respond. And I, I'm sorry, because you guys are my friends, Kyle, I've known you for a hundred years. You guys are all my friends, I didn't want anybody involved in this, I wanted a resolve, I didn't get that. I gotta laugh that by him. I'm not a joke, by what to.
Just go ahead, you, you, at the beginning of your speaking, you stated that it was mentioned in a meeting that the, the police complaints aren't handled. Doesn't exist, or you say it was.
There was a comment that police complaints are not handled, nothing of it.
What meeting was that, you remember? You don't recall?
I believe December, I have to, John's got videos of it, I'll have to read, read that recording. It was mentioned, I, I'm not, Kyle, I, I think you know me a lot, you know, I don't play games with serious stuff. This is my life, this is her life, this is serious stuff.
I'm walking, I live on the same road, I walk the same road.
Right.
I understand there's always situations, casual speeders. Um, but I, you know, I know, you know, your term was having someone to address, you know, come out and talk to them, and, you know. That was, someone did do that, correct? If I'm correct.
Yeah, well, let me explain.
I know it wasn't as kindly as you liked it to be, I understand.
Well, no, not as kindly as you like to be, it's the first time in my world that I ever got involved with police, or, or getting immersed with this, that I was ignored. And ignored again, and then laughed at, okay? When he called, and he refused to handle my complaint on the fifth of September, it's all spelled out in the letter. They refused to handle it, he said, I'm not doing anything. So I have a blow-up in the meeting, act like a clown, that's not me. I didn't need to blow up, the next day, next to Koochia shows up. No, that doesn't cover up what happened. Kyle, when I, when I call for a police officer and I request it, it's in the recordings, I, I told you, I reviewed it with Cambria County Courts. I requested an officer both. I requested an officer both times. The other stories are bogus. All I wanted was an officer there. I wanted it to end. I didn't want to fight. I didn't want it to sit in front of you guys. I don't even like doing this in front of you guys because you're all my friends. Except Paul, you're disappointing. But anyhow, I don't understand why it had to go to this. Saying it's resolved, Kyle, it should have never happened. And what occurred is illegal, is misconduct, is unacceptable in my life. Okay? Because somebody laughing at me about my life, if I got killed, what would they say? Oh, he's seventy-two-year-old guy. He shouldn't be walking on Meadow. I walk Meadow every day. Okay? But it's the same operator over and over again. You probably want to read the minutes from the April twenty-third thing, and you put the whole connection together of who's covering for who and who did what. There's a lot of meat in there that's going to have to come out, if it has to come out. But read the minutes from the April twenty-third township meeting, involving the tree and limit and branch division and everything else. And that's it. I don't, look, I don't even want to be here. I was happy with you, and I have problems you take care of, twice, okay? We laugh about it. It is funny. This is not a problem. This is life-threatening. And I'm not a joke, and I'm not a joke to him or anybody else. And you can say what they want. If I'm forced to do it, then I want to do what I got to do. But to be interrupted by an attorney who knows better last time, was it two minutes and twenty-sixteen seconds? Oh, just take it to court, file suit. Oh, that's how we handle it, Upper Gator? No problem. But I'll tell you what, federal court, this thing will blow up into a monster. I don't want it. You don't want it. But you guys tell me what you want to do. Please respond to my letters. That's it. Thanks for your time, and I'm done. I won't bother you for the next three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I'll lay back up on this, the resolution. I want to make a motion. Have we amended? She adds to red and red. My move is I can all say. Okay, nobody else requesting to be on agenda? Anybody on the public participation?
Yeah, I spoke, I, I.
You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. This won't take long at all, actually. First things first, what you guys passed was a resolution. It's not an order. Okay? And the Constitution of the United States supersedes your resolution. Okay, and let's beg it for the record, okay, that it was Ms. Sue that contacted the people that write, that have the ordinances yet because she's afraid of my camera and she's afraid of transparency. And I have a official complaint against, that I'd like to file against Chief John Blake, and I'm going to hand it to you because you're the supervisor president, okay? It's against him, so I want him to, I want it to be, I want it to be announced. You know, and that is a complaint, a formal complaint. I'm using your process and your paperwork to file the complaint against the chief here. And that's what started this whole thing in October of twenty twenty-two with the non-transparency. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Anybody else on the public participation? Moving on, we're going to go executive session.
It's so quiet in here. WJC, I think, is here. I think that might be a newsman. So. Oopsie. I guess I must have stirred up some poop. We are an executive session. I feel like I'm common, doing commentary on a call. Shut the fuck up, Clint. That is WJC.
Just wanted to. Change your name or something. I'm so sorry. I'm all. Okay, I take the credit. I thought they offered you for everything. Oh, yeah.
I will reconvene meeting. No decisions were made in the executive session. An approval report, Secretary. Favor. Question. I'll second that. Part moving second all in favor? Aye. We rule the general fund bill is in a total amount of sixty-four thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. Second half, one more second. Comment, one comment. First National Bank has a one-dollar charge on it. Be me to a call. So what am I to do about that? Just to make a comment on my own call. Okay. Need motion approved? That's it. I second. One second. All in favor? Aye. Please rule Paul.
Paul?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
The Hurd?
Aye.
Approval of under fund expenditures in a total amount of ninety-six thousand, eight hundred sixteen dollars and fifty-one cents. Part moving second all in favor?
Aye.
Both. Please rule Paul.
Paul?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Sue? Paul?
Aye.
Finished business interview report.
Okay, so for the playground, we were scheduled to have the final walkthrough with James Esteban this week. Obviously, that got rescheduled, and it did not get rescheduled quite yet, but as soon as the announcement hopefully, next couple weeks, we can do that.
Chase, is that the final one, man?
Not, so that'll be.
Spring.
Yeah, yeah. So this will be just a walkthrough, make sure everything's good. I've talked with Nate. They've pretty much done everything. You know, the only thing on their punch list is restoration. Be able to do that until springtime. But we will do the final walkthrough with the funding agency, and then they'll have their punch list or their corrections, and then. Get that closed out. So that being said, we do have, we are asking for motion to approve this substantial completion of the project.
I made that motion. Part moving second all in favor?
Aye.
Both.
And then with that, we also have AI number four, the amount of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and forty-six cents.
Make motion to be paid. Amount of only twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and eight dollars.
Part moving second all in favor?
Aye.
Both.
And then the punch list items for the playground, equipment, solar, they've all been addressed. The remaining mulch was installed last week. The only thing that we're waiting on with them, they did submit their final invoice, I believe, last Friday. We're waiting and have talked with the representative there. We're waiting on them to submit the certified payrolls so that we can check those, make sure that they're paying proper wages. And then once that's done, we will ask for a motion to pay the final invoice contingent on us getting the certified payrolls. Okay, that's it.
One question. How's the Parkland Road?
The grant? Grant? So they announced that, I believe it was last month, and that was not awarded.
We need to clear the police.
Okay. Dave, you have any? Paul?
Aye. Yes, I would like to amend a motion from the January second meeting from opening the lease contract to opening lease contract for extension. Yes, that's a motion.
I'll say. Part moving second all in favor?
Aye.
Both. Can you come?
Yes.
Okay, anything I have, I'd like to add Phil D. to the list of part-time road workers. He's been off and on for a couple of years, and I forgot to mention at the last meeting that take a motion to put Bill back on for this year as a. Part moving second all in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have. Sue?
I'd like to respond to the DDP Bureau of Radiation Protection. They're offering free radon test kits to Upper Gator residents. They have a limited supply, and if they still have them. They have a limited supply and if they still have them, we'd like to obtain them and entertain the opportunity to be able to offer these to them for testing.
I'll second that. Part moving second all favor. Aye. That also. Paul. Gary, John, D S R report. And on the correspondence, I have one thing that I'd like to commend. The police department, they're involved in a two-year job, two-year investigation with multiple police departments all over the country. They came up, they arrested thirty-five individuals with a indictment, federal grand jury. And a period of police department was one of the police departments that participated. The people were from all over the country, Mexico. I really commend those guys for working hard on this for a long time.
Thank you, guys.
All right, anything else on the correspondence? Your thoughts, moving on to new business, the quondation of the twenty-twenty-four garbage recycle fee. That's a request by Officer Castella to other property at five fifty-six South Street, Department Building. There is not, has been abandoned in two thousand seventeen. It's not happening and they, we granted an extension from two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty-three. So this time I'd like to make a motion to exonerate him for twenty-two thousand twenty-four. Part moving second all favor. Aye. Approval of volunteers volunteer fire company fundraising events.
I'll make that motion, will you approve?
Second.
Part moving second all favor. Aye. Both.
I will abstain from that, Alex.
Eligible, one seventy-two, approval of eligible emergency volunteers list for credit free personal.
Make motion and still proposing.
I'll second it. Part moving second all favor. Aye. Both. Approval of site development plan, proposed telecommunications tower by both towers to be located at Westmont Hill Park School District. I'll make that motion. My second and part moving second all favor. Aye. Both. Okay, hire new employee.
I'd like to make a motion to be hiring Nick Zacassia as a full-time police officer, protective priority nineteen.
Part moving second all favor. Aye. Both. Updating telephone system, Kyle. I'm going to table it on the table. Uh, anything else on the new business? If not, anybody else on the public participation? If not, I need a motion. Make a motion. I'll second. Part moving second all favor. Aye. Hey, I want to trade you some. Do that, that. Can't figure out. Well, you know, I did that once, I told my mother. I give them all the time, I can bucket and just sort of inside, inside, you know, I had a whole bunch, you know.
See you, Bob.
You sent it to Eric?
I didn't know I had sent it, I got it last night.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, just please don't do anything to it.
Yeah, I keep you out.
Right.
Just point six minutes of the problem.
Right, but that was it, no, I took two classes. You know, Russ. You're probably nice with Eric. Anyhow, no, I'm probably glad to come here with you guys. I burned out tonight and they took, they took my, and this has been going on since July twenty-second. That was the first day.
So, does Eric have your help? Do you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's not a letter, right? I'll just give you a file, I'll give you Russell.
Okay, yeah, I was just saying, do you wanna, I'll take the files and everything, if you wanna set that up with Eric. Eric, can you think of a follow-up?
I'm a follow-up. Absolutely.
I'll follow you, my name's Sierra. I should nice be, right? I'll just follow you guys up.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. John, you can. No, I'm, I'm, I'm leaving. And then it's, it's video area, area.
Sorry?
It's a video area.
Yeah.
But I'm live streaming.
Oh.
So they better change their resolution again to specify that. That is all about me, by the way. Okay. Okay, she, I, I, what's that?
I had an.
I mean, Kate, I don't know if, like, I, I, I'm, I'm the, I'm the YouTuber that they have a problem with. And I don't know if you. What's that?
Videos different than live streaming.
Well, yeah, and it's, it's, um, you know, what, what happened was I got, I got stopped by a police officer outside of his jurisdiction. And I've been trying to get, get accountability since. And, um, I mean, if you know him, he'll tell you the backstory too, cause I'm, I'm pretty hated in local politics. Because I value the First Amendment and the right to the press, right? And, and also my, my constitutional rights to use the word fuck anytime I want to. Sorry about that, but you know, if that offends you, I'm sorry, but I don't care. You know, so, um, yeah, I mean, if you watch any YouTube videos, my name's The Clanch. Yeah, I mean, K L A N C H, he'll, he has my contact information, but, um, um, yeah, I mean, it's, 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 I, I do intend to file a lawsuit against that particular town. They stole my truck. They, they, I mean, they, they had a police officer harassing me, that was, that had been harassing me, that continues to harass me to this day. They promoted her instead of, instead of addressing my concerns.
We could maybe do a follow-up if you're, if I make your contact information.
Yeah, let's do that, that'd be great, now, like, I, I do this for transparency, like, you know, like, outs, out, outside of this shit, I'm, I'm a pretty chill person, you know?
Yeah.
So, but, uh, yeah, I, I just, you know, I try to hold them accountable and, uh, somebody has to, right? Yeah, if you wanna get my contact information, you can, so.
Uh, I got, I got through your video and I was driving by a fire and.
Okay, yeah. Which video? This one, today?
Yeah.
Okay.
What was the, uh, the deal on that first episode?
They, 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 they started, they did a resolution, they proposed a resolution last month.
Right, I saw your video on that.
Yeah, okay.
It was clear, like, you know, I saw some issues with, uh, that I consulted some legal attorneys with.
Right, right.
And what their proposed thing now was a little bit.
Right, right, and, and I'm, I'm imagining they're gonna, they're gonna, and I'm, I'm, I'm giving, I'm giving them the, the information right now, they're gonna probably have to amend it again. To stay the live streaming, cause I'm live streaming, I'm videotaping, okay, and I am using it to, to discern audio, okay? That's, that's the microphone, right? So, um, I don't understand what a government is so upset about and so worried about just being out in the open. You know, I mean, that, you know, I, um, that's, so yeah, that's, that's, I'm sorry, what'd you ask?
No, no, I just want to skip the game, I'll, I'll watch it.
Yeah, 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 no problem, thanks for watching, man, I appreciate that, I always do, so, you know, um, yeah, absolutely, um, yeah, they're just trying to shit, you know, and now it's, it's, it's a thing against her and, you know, and, come on. You know, it's, 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 it's a stupid little meeting, it's, you know.
Hey, thank you, you got any questions, you know how to call me.
Yep.
Um, John, you already got all this stuff.
I got all that stuff, yeah, yeah. Um.
Did you say?
No, not from John, no.
No.
Do you have a pen?
No, no. I should, I do, is I gave you letters, I wrote them. Um, oh, please show your father the letter I wrote to the, um, the law offices of, uh, Solicitor and Solicitor.
Will do, will do.
I promise though.
Just give me my phone number and you can, like, text me and that'll.
Remind you?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I can get, so, your YouTube is C L A.
No, K, the, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's all, it's all one word, but hit it, see what happens. See what happens when you, when you, when you, when you, when you, whatever, it should come right up, I mean, should say I'm live right now.
Okay, cool, I'll, I'll make sure to look at that.
Yeah, they're, I'm, I'm doing my best to document, I do have some stuff that I'm working on, obviously, cause there's like, there is clear, okay, you as a journalist should think, hmm, why do, why do they care about where I sit, what I do, am I, you know? Like, I don't obvious, I, I obviously don't have the, the, the. Yeah, sure. I, I obviously don't have, you know, the, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on the spot, I don't have that kind of grooviness, okay, and that looks really expensive. Okay, so don't drop it, I, I'm sure you won't, but, um, I don't have that kind of money for that kind of crap, so I just kinda, you know, do my best with, 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 you know, phone and, right, so.
Can I have a contact?
Yeah.
Or do you wanna?
You, no, you can, no, you, I don't care, no, it's, it's out there, I mean, you should see some of the shit people text me, yeah, it's eight one, it's, uh, eight one four, six five nine, eighteen oh five.
Okay, um, I'll get in contact with you and see if it's something that we can.
Watch, watch some of that stuff and, and I have stuff, written stuff too, like complaints and stuff that I filed, okay, like today you, what, I, I handed in a complaint, okay, which was.
And we might actually, cause it's, if you're going to court, it might be something.
Okay, so what that was about was, that was about, okay, in, in, in Novem, I'll tell you how big this goes, okay, and how, this, this is how I feel about this shit, okay? In November, in October of twenty-twenty-two, I was coming up Gouger Street, okay, by the, by, okay, let me start at the beginning, if you have a moment, see you, buddy. See you, bro.
Nice meeting you, thank you for me, and if he needs me, call me, you know, let me know.
You get the Tom Dell Dell fist bump. Um, so, anyway, I, I'll make this as fast as I can, I promise, I, I realize it's cold, okay, so, I was coming up by Saint Andrews Church and I saw a trooper come out and just tailgate an F-150. A state police trooper, tight, not safe, okay, he came up around Franklin Street and then the, the F-150 went straight and the trooper went left. Well, I live right down there, so I was going left also, and I did everything I could to catch him, okay, and I was going, I was going faster than I wanna say on camera to catch him and I, but I caught it on camera. So the next day I came over and I was like, hey, could I please file, I wanna, I want you to, I want to, you to, here's the evidence, charged with, 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 with a, with careless driving, whatever you can. I can't do that, I can't, I can't, I can't file a charge against the state police out of jurisdiction. Now, if I would've done that, here's, here was my, here was my problem with that, it was October, that's the peak of the rut for the deer, and how many, how many, I don't know if you've been here for, I know where your station is, how many times have you seen dead deer on Gouger Street, I don't know if you're from around here, but.
I'm, I'm from outside.
So, but still, okay, so then you, right?
I see her all the time.
Yeah, right, and then, where are you seeing them, laying dead on the road, you know, so, I thought, you know what, let's, let's, let's just do so, you know, hold them accountable, I can't do anything. Okay, fine, he wouldn't let me record either, there's, it's, it, the case law they cite is Bradley versus Pennsylvania, which is a, which is a defiant trespass ordinance, cause the guy said, I'm not leaving, and they said, leave, and he didn't leave. They're trying to use that as you can't record in a police station, well, there's a public area in there, as you should know as a videographer, correct, they, what they're doing is they're saying there's no public area in the police station. And they do their work in the pub, so how can you file a complaint or do anything if you, okay, so I, I started pounding on him a little bit on my YouTube channel. Then, in September, or actually in late August of last year, Officer Navatney pulled me over going, this Upper Yoder, okay, pulled me over going, I was, I stopped at the, at the Cambria Hardware, the Ace Hardware there. Which is in Lower Yoder Township, I don't know if you're aware of that, but it's nowhere close to their jurisdiction for doing, for doing this to him, for flipping him off, okay? Protected First Amendment, free, okay, he said disorderly conduct, that video has got over a half a million views on, not on my channel. But on the civil rights lawyer channel, uh, John H. Bryan out of West Virginia, I like him, he's a good guy, okay, and his, his reach is.
Massive.
Ha, half a million people, okay, so, when I went up to, when I came up to file the complaint the next day, I parked over there, my mother's handicapped and she has a handicap placard, okay, and a lot of times, anytime she's with me, I park in a handicap spot in case she has to pee. Okay, she's blind, she's, she's, she's blind, okay, and I just, okay, I came in here, I wanted to, I wanted to do it, do it in here, okay? And no, they sent another officer, you have to come over here, I was like, I'm not going over there, okay, well, I went over there and there was a huge blow up, and then I got a parking ticket for parking in a handicap spot right there, okay? Even with the placard, cause he said I didn't, okay, now he used my video as the evidence, he didn't come up and look in my truck or anything, okay? That's, okay, now, the, now the magistrate, I asked for a change of venue, magistrate right there, she didn't give it to me. Magistrate's office is right there, the police station is right there, that sounds a little, that sounds a little fishy to me, doesn't it? Okay?
Officially, I can't say anything.
Okay, let me, I, I, let me ask something, okay, actually, probably ask this, are you, are you, do you just do video or are you a reporter also?
I mainly just video.
Okay, so am I kinda wasting my time telling all this shit, or can you take this to somebody and let them know?
Oh, yeah, I can take, I give, we, when we go out.
If you don't mind, I mean, I, I, you know, this is, this, all this stuff is all documented on my YouTube channel, that is all completely, since I've learned that this thing is my best friend when it's dealing with them, okay?
I believe everyone should.
Yeah, so.
It's, especially now.
Yes.
Today's day and age, you need cameras, you need on your vehicle.
So, so when I, so for that ticket, okay, I came up here and I had, I had, I had to continue, so I was walking around all day, okay? And my truck was parked on, okay, Hurstburger Road is the divider between Southmont and Upper Yoder, okay? So I live a few blocks down there and the right side is Upper Yoder, the left side is Southmont. I parked my truck in Upper Yoder because in Southmont they passed an ordinance because of me and my trailers, okay, that's Russ, the news reporter in a newspaper article about that, okay? And, um, I got a little bit upset about it, you know, I mean, I can redress the, the government for my grievances and I just don't like to use nice language. So I've done that and, long story short, and I'll let you go then, okay, so anyway, I went for a walk, okay? And I came back a half an hour later, okay, and my truck is on a rollback, they towed it, they kept it from me for six days. They said the state police have a hold on it, but if the state police would have a hold on it, they would have a search warrant. I've been asking to see a search warrant since, since September, nobody's yet to produce one. Okay? And it's, it's, so, you know, if you, if you don't mind, let, any, if somebody will contact me, I would super appreciate it, you know, cause it's hard to get, it's hard to get my voice out, you know?
Honestly, yeah, one of the reporters would do, like, this could even be like a whole package, like, a lot of times I get someone to do, you know, cover, cover events like, like this.
Yeah.
And we'll write a shorter story on it.
Of course, right.
But there's always follow-ups, there's always.
Yeah.
It goes up the dirt.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like, I, I've, I've, uh, when, when, was it Mackenzie was still up doing, okay? Yeah, I met her a few times at the, the, uh, Johnson Housing Authority, cause I was going down there and, um, complaining, uh, speak, trying to speak for the people when they kick prospect out. And I feel that, because I went down there and I was, mm, I feel responsible for them going, you know what, we'll kick them all out. I, that's the kind of heart that I have and the person, I, I feel personally responsible for that, even though I know, and people said to me, look, you, you did nothing do with that, that was nothing on you, you just, you know, but I was like. Maybe if I would've kept my mouth shut, they would've given them thirty days. You know, I mean, that's, because I, you know, cause I try to hold them accountable to what they do.
Yeah.
You know, so you look like you're cold, I'm gonna let you go, you know, so.
I agree, if people need to be held accountable.
Thank you, and I'm, like I said, you guys can, you know, get in touch with me however you need to.
Yeah.
Thank you, it's nice meeting you, thanks. That was kinda cool, that's a videographer from W J's, cool news, people. That's a videographer from WJ's, cool news, people. Hope y'all are enjoying the stream, hope y'all can hear me. Hope y'all can hear the other people. Hope, you know, the, the microphones are just to conform with the, with the audio, audio equipment requirement, and, again, I wasn't, I wasn't shooting video. There was, there was nothing about, there was nothing video about that, that was all, it's a live stream, and I'm still live, so. I do that because honestly, police departments like Upper Yoder will kill people like me. They just, they just, they just, they just hate the fact that, here he is, here he is. If he would just shut up, we could just do our jobs. Well, I'm asking you to do your job, I'm asking you to do your job correctly, and that's, that's what I, that's what I, that's what I hope, that's what I hope for. You know, and, and like I say, total transparency, if you take, if you take tax dollars for your paycheck, then you should probably have to answer to it. What's going on here? Little walk. Oh, these alleys are so slippy. Sir. Good. Make sure you don't steal that fucking car. You know the cheeky shenanigans they do around here sometimes? Car thieving, how many times I steal my truck? You know? Twice, actually, I was carjacked once, and was carjacked once, and it was just stolen from where it was parked, so, you know? That's, that's, that's awesome, that's cool, you know? I, I, I don't mind, you know? So, let's, let's do this. This, this setup worked pretty good. I'll show it to you here in a second, it's pretty, pretty rudimentary, actually. I mean, they just hate me, they just hate me because, because, because why? Because the policeman said, so this is, this is my microphone setup, all it is is some handle I found on, on Jeff's website with another, little microphone, a rubber band. So, it works, I'm gonna put it on mute, and then it's gonna go back in my pocket, because I don't feel like carrying all this shit. Is it still on me? Yeah, it's still there, good. Okay. In here. But I know nobody's watching my livestream, I don't really care. So, it's cold. Cinnamon Express Celestial Seasonings Tea is delicious, that stuff is some good tea. I've made several cups of Celestial Seasonings Tea, hot tea in the kitchen. That's where I make it, and it's hot, it's in my kitchen, so, you know? Appreciate everybody who watches my shit, honest to God, I do, hopefully I don't get fucking run over here on the way down, or, you know? I was a good boy, I sat there, I didn't even look around the room, I didn't even, I, I, I sat there with my face forward, I didn't even look around the room, I didn't want to be accused of anything. Nefarious, or whatever. So, yeah. So, let's, show you all something here, okay? This light sucks, I realize, I'm sorry about that, but, okay. There's this now, I'm gonna measure this and see how, does anybody know, you can answer me? Okay, so they painted lines, they painted one here. There, right, right, about ten feet from the telephone pole, right there. Down to, mind you, this is Upper Yoder that painted these lines, wasn't, uh. They painted this one too. You know, it's not even straight. That line's not straight across the road. Nowhere fucking close. Wow. Seriously, that line is nowhere close to straight across this fucking road, it's closer on this end, and I can promise you, I will fucking, I can promise you that I will prove that with a measuring stick. Okay, see, it's like a double line, let's see if they come and repaint it, it's crooked. It's further apart on this side than it is on that side. Must be my neighbor. Well, I don't really consider those people my neighbors on Hersberger, actually, never did. Did I flip it? No, I didn't flip it, my thumbs are cold, okay, yeah, so, all right, I'm almost home. So. So, I appreciate you watching, if you watch, thank you for another livestream from your government. That's your government, hard at work, wasting your tax dollars frankly, worrying about, worrying about what a member of the public has to say about how they do their job. That's, that's what their, that's what their main concern is, and frankly, I don't know, I don't know what we're still on here? Yeah, good, okay, good, all right, so, like again, thanks for watching. Appreciate you stopping by, if you like what you see, leave a comment, if you don't like what you see, leave a comment, my hands are freezing, so I'm gonna go inside. Enjoy a little peace and quiet this evening, thanks again for watching, appreciate it, bye. Are you sure you don't want to stop livestreaming? Yes, I'm sure.